Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February 7th, 2022 Select Board Meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order, regular session, 7:00 p.m. Well, we're out of executive session and back into regular session at 7:00 p.m. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anybody here for public comment? No public comment. So our first order of business is a public hearing for the joint petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon to install a pole on Commerce Way. So I'll entertain a motion to enter the public hearing.
So?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are in our public hearing. Do you have anybody from National Grid? We have them remotely. All right, the floor is yours, Dave.
Hi, David Boucher, Senior Designer, National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Andover. Here tonight for joint pole petition, pole number 3132-84 is a new location. We're asking for a business at 25 Commerce Lane, Commerce Drive, Commerce Way. Let me write the third time. Commerce Way is looking to increase and have a large service added to their property. And what we'd like to do is bring the overhead wires, as shown in the diagram. It's kind of grayed out with dash lines for the poles on their property. The solid circular lines are existing poles. And the dark black, filled in with black, is the new pole that we're asking for on Commerce Way. That will support the lines going in there into the property. Anytime we take off with three phase, we need to have something supporting across the street with a pole and a guy wire in this case is what we're looking for. I've petitioned, sent the information into the FAA, and they've approved it. So that's on its way, and we're working with the manager of the airport, Mr. Miller. In conjunction with him, we've got plans to notify him at the right time to do the work too. So we're just looking for the town's approval to place this. It's very similar to across the other part of the airport. And I was here a couple of weeks ago or a month ago about a very similar type job where we're looking for a support pole. This is a very similar type thing. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions from the board?
Just when would you anticipate the project starting?
I'm not involved in the actual scheduling of it. I believe there is a delay on getting the transformer that we need on the property, but we probably want to put the poles in before that. That's probably a couple to, a couple of weeks to a couple of months away. I'm not sure if the customer is ready or not for all the work to be done on the property. There's been a lot of work being done there, so.
Okay, okay.
Is this also one of those shorter poles?
One of the what poles?
Is this also a stub pole, like the one that we have on Sutton?
Main Street right now.
Or Sutton Street that you came to us before?
Yes, it's exactly what we call it, a stub pole with a guy wire and an anchor behind it to support it. It's called a stub pole, yep.
How long will the stub pole be in place? Because sometimes they last for quite some time.
We'd like to have it for the length of the service. I mean, it's indefinite. It's a permanent situation that we're looking for here. If and when that service ever got taken away, we'd take it away. But it's there for the duration.
Are all the stub poles there for the duration? We have one, like I said, right on Main Street across from Dunkin' Donuts. That's, by understanding, that was going to be transferred out. You know, that they were just using it as they replaced the pole. That isn't the case for Commerce Way?
This one is to support, no, across-street support.
Oh, of course, okay.
They're running a guy wire across the street. And there's no residents or in this area. So yeah, it's there forever because it needs to continue to support that pole.
It's pulling up the line, okay. Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Other questions, comments? Any public comment on this public hearing? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing then.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're out of the public hearing. I'd like to take the vote out of order, if that's okay with the board. Which would be under New Business, item A. So I will entertain a motion to approve the pole on Commerce Way.
I make a motion to approve the pole on Commerce Way as presented.
Second. You have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All set, Dave?
One more thing, Dave. Could you, by any chance, could you have someone get back to us as to the one that is on, right on Main Street across from Dunkin' Donuts? I certainly hope that that's not going to be there a long time. It's not a good look for our Main Street or for the merchants who are nearby.
I'm very familiar with that. I believe that we, I have addressed that months ago. It was in the fall. There's a double pole there right across, there's a doctor's office right there. I'll talk to she-mat and see if she can get back to someone from the council, too. She's been working with you, I know that. And I'll see if she can get someone to look into that and also notify you about where that's at and, you know, work it out as soon as possible and get that moving along.
Great, thank you, Dave. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Have a good night. Okay, we will move on to licensing. So I'll entertain a motion to move into licensing.
Chair, move into licensing.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? We are in licensing. Over to you, Mr. Chair.
So tonight, we just have a public hearing and then a vote after that. It's a public hearing for an application for an all-alcohol off-premise package store license for Kajal and Kevin LLC DBA Liquor Junction at 1280 Osgood Street. And I think we have folks here to speak to it, so please do. Do yourself? Yeah.
Hi, I'm Michael LaBarea. Ruben and Rodman, good afternoon, good evening. Wow, Chairman, members of the Select Board. I represent Liquor Junction. This is Katell Patel, and he's going to be the liquor manager. We are certainly here to answer any questions that you might have, but I wasn't certain whether the signatures had gotten circulated around to you. I have a copy of them. And also, we have a copy of a PowerPoint here. I'll just pass them around, if you wouldn't mind passing them around, about the location. So it's obviously in the new development. That's where we, Osgood Street. And the applicant runs at least three other liquor stores, one in Somerville, four others, Woburn, Winchester.
Woburn, you said Woburn?
Woburn.
Reading, Woburn, Somerville, and Winchester. And they are all under the same name.
That's right.
Oh, and Main Street there in Reading, right?
Next to the Market Basket.
Yep, yep.
That's right. And so they're very excited about the development. The landlord is here in support as well. They've worked together to put a good plan together to support the community in that area, and we're looking for your support.
And I can go over this presentation briefly if you want. It could take you five minutes, at least.
I appreciate it, if you would.
Yeah, go ahead.
So as I discussed just now, that we have a total of four locations right now. We opened Reading location in 2014, so it's been eight years that we opened the first liquor store. Then we, the main thing for the board, that we have no liquor violation at all in the last seven, eight years now almost, and for millions of transaction, which is one of the things that we are proud of. We get everybody tip certified, anybody that has to be at the register, they all have to be tip certified. It's continuous process that we have implemented, and it's working. We have ID scanning machine at all the registers, so it's easier. So then common mistakes are not made. So that's one thing that we continuously do as well. What we are, like what kind of store we are, and that's why we are trying to come to North Andover, right? That's very important to us as well, because we are trying to invest a lot of money, energy, and effort. We are family-run, so we need to make sure wherever we do, it's our time is well worth, and it's good for the town as well. So we have evaluated the market overall in North Andover, what it is there, what's not there, when this new development that Bob has done, what we can bring there, which is not commonly available in the area. We bring in roughly 3,000 wines, 2,500 beers, 300 ready-to-drink, non-alcoholic options, lots of spirits, but it's, the selection we correct in such a way that it is not available in every store that you go to. So we really spend a lot of time on it. We have wine directors in every store and manager in every store. We have beer managers in every store. So we try to focus on every aspect of the liquor store. And nowadays, I'm not sure how many of you are into the different kind of liquor and wine and all that. There are a lot of stuff to choose from. So far, it's the same thing. So we try to take it very seriously. It's not about only getting the gross profit out. It's about what we are providing is unique and not. So I'll bring along more. So one of the things that we do, we have one of the largest single-barrel whiskey selection in the state. We work very passionately about it. Actually, we make trips, actually, I make trips to a lot of distillery out of the states and try to bring in stuff that even the state doesn't have. So we have very passionate followers for whiskey program. Certainly, why, so what we are, so we will be employing at least 10 employees, maybe more most probably with the size of the store. Our main thing is provide upscale and well-priced services to the new development that Bob has made there. And as you know, Osgood Street is that. So one thing he got excited about us is that Osgood Street is growing. There is a lot of developments going on, and what we can fill in, what's going on in there. So that's, so our model works perfect for that location. We do support local charities and not-for-profit. We are small. We are not like big companies, but we still do what we can. And there are, some of them are listed there. Our main focus, our business model, so we do, and I know every store does tastings and everything, right? That's kind of common, right? For us, what do we do differently? That's what we come along, right? So in our stores, we try to do a lot of focused tastings where it's more of an educational as well as it's fun. So we'll do a like Irish whiskey versus Scotch kind of events. And also, we do unique twist to all of them. Even in wine, we'll do the new world to the old world kind of a competition. And we let customer decide, and so we make fun events out of it. And it takes a lot of time and effort, but I think it's all worth it. We have roughly 20,000 followers across all over the Instagram and Facebook pages on all of them, and they are very active with us, like all local people I'm talking about, the people who are shopping with us every day and supporting us every day. So it's something that we want to bring into North Andover. Certainly, why this location? That's a key part, because we will be spending, as I said, a lot of money, a lot of time and effort, and also Bob started trusting us to bring something exciting to the plaza and development, right? It's upscale residential development, as you all must have seen it and must have gone through all the process. It's a growing part of North Andover. We kind of know it. I used to live in Methuen before, so I kind of know that area very well. And certainly, one of the biggest things is area is not served with the full service and modern liquor store. If you go two miles, that's my thing in the liquor store. We go two or three miles anyways, there is not really a full-service liquor store, what I call, where you can get, with the shopping cart, you can go for, if you have somebody coming for wine, coming for beer, coming for hard-to-find spirits, everything in one place. So that's what we'll provide. Even if it's not that big, we have figured out, because our, out of four location, our two locations are 10,000 square feet and under, we know how to do that. Know how to bring in a lot of exciting products, and still people don't need to go shop out of town. That's our main thing. There are some sample pictures there. That's how our stores look. And certainly, the reviews. So I would, so we are 4.6 and 4.7 above on Google, which is very hard to earn nowadays, as you know, where everybody's, we are, as a human being, we are very needy. You know, everybody needs attention, and they want, so we provide that back. Whatever town we are in, we try to make sure that we blend in and we provide exceptional services. So that's something that we are proud of. And one thing I will mention again, that we are family-run. My wife's right there, my brother's right there. We all go to the store every day. We work store every day, even if we are big enough now, but we still are there, supporting the store, supporting the community, and working with everybody. So that's my five-minute spiel. Any questions you guys may have, I can answer it for you.
That's true.
Thank you.
Very nice. What would your anticipated timeline be for this?
So Bob has done actually phenomenal job of building is ready. So once this approvals and everything goes through, we are thinking of four months. And we have done this before. So all of our stores were brand-new, so we know what, one after another, the thing we can do to make it faster and smoother. But we are thinking of summer, that we will have a planned opening.
Any other questions?
Your timing is good. We just got a new liquor license out here to the town because of the census, so you wouldn't be here if we didn't, so your timing is good.
Anything else you want to add?
No, I'm all set. And anybody else has a comment, I can leave that for them.
I appreciate it. Thank you for the diligence. We do have the application here, so I'll just hear a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if we actually opens it, and we just have to see if anybody wants to. I don't remember us making a motion open it. I might have missed it. But we should just open it and then see if anybody has any comments in the crowd. And I know we did get some over email as well.
We did, and I appreciate you taking note of that, because I did want to mention. So first of all, let's open the hearing.
Chair, make a motion to open the public hearing?
All right.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Apologies for the stagger in the sequence here, but thank you, because I did have a note here. We did receive between a written submission with signatures and a number of emails, 19 folks responded in affirmative support. And I have to say, I can't recall the last time I saw 19 folks respond in a favorable manner. So that's certainly under consideration, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the only comment I would have is just to remember that we're a college town. And I think it's fabulous that everybody's tip-certified, and you have all the scanning. We say this to everybody, but we do have, obviously, Merrimack College in town. Although you're on the other side.
So our Somerville location is actually right on the border and Somerville, you know?
Okay.
So we are right next to, so and so away from MIT, Harvard, and Harvard College. So we certainly know, and that's the main reason I am for science on it. And that's the only thing keeps me up at night, if you ask. I'm genuinely hammered. It's not about what we are selling, it's about how we are selling.
I appreciate your attention to that, so thank you.
But touching upon what Laura just said, you realize, of course, we are also pretty close to being a border community. Out-of-state licenses are not acceptable form of ID. If you do it, you do it at your own risk. So you really need to be very, very careful with that, being a college town. We've got kids from all over, all over the country. But, and we, you know, we've learned that some kids do come in from New Hampshire. And again, even if it passes the machine, it is still at your own risk. So I didn't know if...
We try to do the passport, like 99% of them, we won't, we will deny the transaction if anybody looks young enough with out-of-state ID. It's usually we ask for the passports. And kind of most of the college towns, like I was saying, Somerville, they all know. They usually don't come with out-of-state. They usually come with the passports. So that's kind of given for them. Our passport card nowadays is very handy available. So that's what people do, because we understand the implication, and as we have these many stores, and we take it personally, you know, it's not about the, it's just not about the violation and what you can bring. I have kids, we have well enough kids, I don't want anybody to go hang on this, they have to go. So that's why we take it very personally.
That's very good to hear. Thank you for that. But just to be fair to you, so this is your fair warning right now. So please abide by what you've just described, and we'll all be good.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, now we're back in sequence here. All right, thank you again for your patience. Any other comments from the public before we close the hearing?
Yes, I'm Bob Bowlin. My wife, Lillian Montalto, and I have owned for Jetta Properties for 24 years now. And we did not develop it for 20 years, trying to figure out what had fit best on the property and what made the most sense for North Andover. As you, some of you know, we live in Andover next door, but we spend a lot of time in North Andover. So as a result, 192 apartments with handy cabin at Princeton Properties got built. They're AAA property, AAA product. We've tried to do the same on the front of the space. Bird &amp; Wolf is the restaurant that we chose to put in. It was just recognized by Boston Magazine as one of the three best restaurants outside of Boston in Massachusetts. And the café was recognized by Bytes Magazine as the best new café in Massachusetts. We're putting in a Starbucks there. We're working with Mark Wahlberg to put in a CrossFit training facility, F45. Passion Nails, which my wife says is the best nail salon in the Merrimack Valley. I don't know, but that's what she says, is there. But we did a comprehensive analysis of the site and what should go there, because as you all know, the retail end of the business has changed dramatically in the last four or five years since we started developing it. And it took us three years to get Starbucks to commit to the site. And in the period from June until December, the price of building that Starbucks went up 50%. So I hope you can come to a decision tonight so that the Patel family can move forward on this product. We saw major consumer shortage in the demographics and the market analysis for a really good liquor, wine, and beer store. And hence, we went out and looked at about seven or eight different candidates for the site and chose Liquor Junction, because they've got a clean record, number one, with millions of transactions and no violations, number one. Number two, their customer service rating is between 4.7 and 4.8. And we in the real estate business live on our reviews, on our customer service reviews. So their customer service is spectacular, and I think it's really important. 1,000 or 2,000 beers, I can't even imagine. I don't drink beer, so that doesn't help me much. But the reality is, they're a family-owned business. They take it personally. They run it every day, day-to-day. And I think it's important that we have that kind of occupant in this facility, both from our standpoint and from North Andover's standpoint. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anybody, any other public comment? Okay, well then, I'll hear a motion to close our hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing for the application for the all alcohol off-premise package store license from Kajal and Kevin LLC doing business as Liquor Junction.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well then, now we're on to the next part, which is to vote on this application for the license. Obviously, we've heard quite a bit. We have the full package in here, complete, all signed off by all the appropriate departments, building, fire, and police. No questions or issues? Any comments from both Select Board members or from town manager regarding this? I, as I said, I think well organized, well put together, very impressed with the nature of the business and how you're conveying how you have run, how you look to run the business. So I would certainly like to hear a motion in support of this.
Chair. I wonder how you don't get to make motions all the time?
Don't get rusty.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the application for an all-alcohol off-premise package store license from Kajal and Kevin LLC doing business at Liquor Junction, 1280 Osgood Street.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Great. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck. Join our Merchants Association.
Yes, that's the next plug, is make sure you join the Merchants.
Thank you again. Have a good evening now.
We got quite a contingency here.
That's great. I just need a motion to...
We have budgets to talk about, no? Mr. Chair, I'll move to close the meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, we're out of licensing, onto new business, and we will be looking to accept the capital improvement plan. So there are two items in the capital improvement plan that we need to take out of order or to see if there's any discussion on it. One being the door into, from Dee's office into the Select Board room, and one for the rooftop unit for the police station. So I would have to recuse myself from that. So if there's any discussion on that, if anybody has any discussion on that, I can exit or...
I'm sorry, could you say that again? I was...
Oh, sorry. So there's two items in the capital improvement plan that my business is going to, well, it's not my business, the company I work for would be involved with. One being the door to Dee's office, and one for the rooftop unit that's being replaced at the police station. So we need to take them out of order if anybody has any discussion on those two items. If not, we can move on.
I'm kind of...
What's with the door?
It goes like this.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that, given the scale and the scope and the open disclosure, so. Yeah.
So that being said, is there any discussion about the capital improvement plan? Does anybody have any questions, want to discuss anything with the town manager while we have her here?
Yeah, we presented at the tri-board meeting.
Yep.
It does implement the first portions of Facility Master Plan 2, which is very exciting, which we've talked about again at the last meeting. Other than that, it's really routine capital items that you see in our typical annual plan.
No real change in the expected funding and that sort of, that's all?
No debt, all free cash, except for we are using some operating funds, as we mentioned at that meeting.
And we're doing that so that we can move forward with Facility's Master Plan 2. It's strategic that we're doing it that way, just as my reminder to everybody.
Yeah, we're trying to maintain our debt capacity levels so that we're able to continue to save for the big projects that we have moving forward.
It's just, so folks at home, you know, where are we with the passing? If we pass this, where will we be in terms of that ratio?
For, oh, we'll be, we'll still hovering around 4%. And we typically like to be around 5%?
Yeah, yeah.
Lower than 5%? Once we start kind of embarking on Facility's Master Plan 2, we'll have to have a conversation about that 5% number, because it's likely going to be higher than 5%. More like 6. But taking on the amount of work that we're taking on, I think that's fairly reasonable. But at one point in the near future, before we take on any of the debt, we actually down to threes, so.
That's great. I mean, that's well below, again, you've driven us down this road many times.
It's a lot of help from everybody.
Okay, that's good.
Teamwork.
Yeah, sure.
Is there anything in the, if I just asked my question, is there anything that you see that possibly could shift in this year that would impact the capital?
No, not at all. It's a very reasonable plan. A lot of it, majority of it, is really our routine maintenance that we do annually. So every year, you'll see us doing roads. Every year, you see us doing IT. It's really things that we do just to make sure that we continue to operate and keep our assets in a good working order, so. The one thing that we are seeing is the... The one thing that we are seeing is the generator for the senior center. If you remember correctly, that was one of our add-ons, an alternate. We didn't want to lose, so they maintained the price for us. And that's in the capital improvement plan, but it's really just routine items that we typically have. And even after we do, and you'll see this when I give my budget presentation, but even after we do all of our capital improvements and all of our reserve transfers and free cash, we'll still have over $5 million in free cash left at the end of the fiscal year.
That's great.
Which will recertify for the next year. That's more.
And just out of curiosity, what is normal, like our comparable times for free cash?
This is high. I would say the normal free, but this is high because we've had kind of, I don't want to say a comedy of errors, but we've had like a strange convergence of events. We've had the Columbia Gas funds that all got turned over. We had a big Amazon permit fee. We had a big planning board fee. We had a lot of things come on that were unusual. But I would say most communities' free cash is probably hovering more around the $6 million number of our size.
I'm sorry, how many?
Both 6 million.
6 million? And we have.
12.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said five.
We have 12. We'll have five left. We'll have five left at the end, after we finish our split in. Yep, before they recertify for next year.
Any other questions, comments?
Oh, it's just, it's just amazing to see it kind of come together. Got the rhythm.
A lot of work.
And to have the forethought, to like plan ahead and so that we can do these bigger projects. I think it's wonderful, and we're lucky that we're, you guys have worked so hard and have the town's best interests at heart.
It's a fun puzzle we get to put together.
That's one more fun.
Sure. All right. Well, then I would entertain a motion to accept the capital improvement plan.
Move that the select board accept the FY '23, FY '27 Capital Improvement Plan as presented.
Motion in a seca. All those in favor?
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will move on to our town manager's recommended fiscal year '23 budget.
Thank you. So tonight I am joined by our finance director, Lynn Savage. Also in the room is fire chief John Weir, our police chief, Chief Gray, and our director of economic development, Andrew Shapiro, because they are department heads that have some changes in the budget. As you know, I typically like to have all of our department heads here, and unfortunately, due to COVID, we didn't think that was the best idea this year. So we're coming in a little light, but they have major changes or some changes that if you had questions about, we wanted to have them available. Some of these slides will look rather familiar to you because they may mimic or be close to what you saw during our forecasting exercise. But this year, the town is presenting a balanced budget within capacity as determined by our forecasting exercises and additional information that we've learned since then in October. This includes consideration of the advice of the Revenue and Fixed Cost Committee. The $124 million number includes transfers to stabilization accounts and funding of capital using free cash. It is a comprehensive number. Basically, it's everything we're going to use next year to operate the town. Just to run through a little bit of what these different areas are, because it can be confusing. So property taxes obviously speaks for itself. Tax title, what you'll see is that in fiscal year '21, we did become a little bit more aggressive with our tax title. And we brought in $735,000, so a lot of that being actually from one parcel. In fiscal year '22, we're continuing that. Tax title basically is properties that have been in arrears for many years, that haven't paid their taxes. And so we've been, we've been working on taking those off the books. We do not have a lot of those. If you look through our annual financial report, we typically have 97, 98, 99% of our taxes paid. But a lot of the times, the ones that don't pay tend to be a big number. And unfortunately, when you don't pay, your interest really goes quickly, and so it can be a lot to pay. The other taxes includes things like motor vehicle excise tax, meals tax, penalties and interest in any pilots that we get, charges for service as solid waste fees, ambulance fees, and other fees like building permits. Licensing permits is burial, food, gas, and liquor permits. Miscellaneous revenue is our cell tower, fines, our interest income, and any host community fees that we receive. And all other sources is interfund, our capital transfers, and our reserve transfers. So you can see the all other sources can kind of jump around a little bit depending on how much free cash we're using in that year. So the revenues for the fiscal year '23 budget total $116,527,184. That's a 7.47% increase from the last fiscal year, not including the free cash that we're using for reserves and capital. The property taxes are estimated to grow by 9.75%, which is insane. $8.136 million total, with 6 million of that representing new growth. So to think about that, the 2.5% number, that levy number is about $2 million. And so the rest of that is the new growth. For local receipts, we're actually seeing another decrease, this is the second year in a row, of 0.6%. It's going down about $60,000. It's better than last year when we saw a $400,000 decrease in that line. However, if you think about it, we're actually down $460,000 from where we were in a normal budget. So that's the one place where I would say, and I'm sure Lynn would say too, that we really haven't seen recovery in the municipal world. And local aid per our policy in virtue just is level funded. And the reason we do that is that the state budget is unfortunately not on the same calendar as ours. Because why would we do that? So we really don't find out until well after town meeting what the state's budget is going to be. So we level fund that, and a lot of the time, that extra money will flow over to our free cash cover.
It will be interesting to see. You know, we've had a number of new businesses open up in the past year. And of course, we opened the door to another one here. It'll be very, I mean, you can see the possibility of a very positive trajectory for local receipts because of that.
Yeah, I get my question. What is the biggest piece of local receipts that is down? Is it meals tax?
Meals tax has started to recover. A lot of it is permit fees. Permit fees were up for a while. So if you think about it, we had, we not only had the Amazon permit, but we also had the year before that, that giant ice storm with all, and then we had a lot of roof permits all at once. So we were seeing kind of a trajectory of having increased permits, and now we're excited to not see that so much.
We might have also had permits from Columbia Gas.
True. That's true, too. Yeah, we, so it could be that this negative 460 is just reality, and for five years, we were just not in a normal. We were ready, yeah. Right? So this, right, this might just be where we are now. It's just something for us to keep an eye on.
What does the meals tax look like at this point? I mean, up, down?
It's up.
Well, prices are, prices are up too, though, unfortunately.
On a quarterly basis, it's up probably about $30,000 a quarter.
That's not bad.
It'll be about budget this year if it stays at that level.
We were both surprised by where it was last year.
Yes. The state, when we did the recap, made us decrease that revenue because they said that there was no way we were going to bring in the revenue that we had budgeted. We decreased it, and then we met what we would have normally budgeted.
Well, the food is very good here in North Andover.
It's a good sign.
The takeout, right? Yeah. You know, it's good to see those things recovering. But those local receipts, we'll be keeping an eye on those for the next couple of years. So new growth, just a little reminder on what that is. So Proposition Two and a Half allows the town to raise 2.5% of the tax levy plus any new construction. And that's improvements are total new buildings. And that, but those improvements in the total new buildings are called new growth. This year, you'll remember from our forecasting, we're seeing extraordinary new growth, and I'm writing it in like huge letters because it really is extraordinary. We typically budget $650,000 to $700,000 a year. This year, we're seeing almost 10 times that number. I made a little chart in here that shows what we typically saw. So for those of you that can't see it, in '16, the actual we had was $630,000. In '17, the actual new growth was $570,000. In '18, the actual new growth was $867,000, and it looks better for a few years. '19, $1.1 million. '20, '20, $1.3 million. '21, $969,000. And then '22, you know, it just kind of keeps growing here for us. So of that new growth that we are receiving, 3.6 million of that will be from the Amazon. The rest of it is from other new growth that we're seeing in the community.
So is that, should we start increasing that typical budget?
So we, what we usually do is a five, what Lynn usually does is a five-year look back. It kind of takes a look at what all the permits are. What we've been doing when we go through is we no longer have been doing estimates. What we do is we meet with our building inspector, we meet with Gene Enright, we meet with Andrew, and we meet with Paul Hutchins and Bill Mitchell, and we take a look at what permits have been pulled. And then we look at the value of the construction on those permits. And then we figure out when the construction deadline is for those, when they're going to be done. And then we actually have like real numbers. So we've moved away from this kind of guessing of $650,000 to $700,000 to having more exact numbers. Which is how we got to where we are today and how we kind of have a good estimate on where we are for next year.
Generally, in the past, we've tried to be somewhat conservative because then we don't run into trouble and it's better for the budget. So I think looking at real numbers is probably a good way, good way to go.
And even the $6 million number is probably on the more conservative side. Bill probably, Lynn probably wants to elbow me for saying that, but we'll probably, we'll probably have casualties here, but we wouldn't want to go any further than that. But like I said, 3.6 million of that new growth is Amazon, and so the rest of it is made up of other projects. And, you know, we talked about this a little bit at the forecasting meeting, and a lot of this is kind of this perfect storm. We had projects that were held up due to COVID. We had projects that were accelerated due to COVID. We had Amazon's TIF not coming on because they're not 100% at completion. We have the fact that we've accepted as a town the local accelerated new growth statute. So all of that comes together to create this one perfect thing that's happening for fiscal year '23. I don't think we'll see this again. Next year, we'll see more new growth than typical, but it certainly won't be at the $6 million mark. So this is a chart showing what our revenue is made up of. So you can see that about 73% of our budget is property taxes. And in fiscal year '22, about 87% of that was made up of the residential side. So you can see that really a lot of our budget will fall, falls on residents. We, we'll have to look when we do it and do our comprehensive annual report this year and see how that shifts when you bring Amazon on in the industrial sector and how much of it falls on residents then. It will definitely certainly be less, but that's what we're working with for information now. So that brings us to the fiscal year '23 expenditures. We're back at that 124 number again. This is all in. This includes our state assessments. So you know that we get a cherry sheet. The state gives us money, and then they humorously on the next page take a whole bunch of it back. So that includes this. It includes a $6.7 million in free cash that we're planning on using. And it includes almost $3 million in large capital expenditures that we're going to be doing within the levy that I'll talk about a little bit more as we go through. So this is a chart of the town's expenses, and you can see that, as we all know, education really is the majority of our budget. This 45.9% number really isn't a true number. It's actually more around 69% when you include the school's benefit costs as well as the support services and shared costs that the schools use. So the schools are the being about 70% of the town North Andover's budget. The fiscal year '23 budget includes increases of 7.47% in departmental spending from fiscal year '22 excluding reserves. Municipal departments are increasing by 5.78%, which is a great improvement from the 0.6% of last year, where we only were allowed to increase by $147,000. So if you remember, last year's budget was really a reduced service budget. We were able to return a lot of our budgets to normal operations this year, which has been great. The shared services budget, which last year decreased by almost 4%, is increasing by 10.85%. And shared services is things like information technology, facilities, things we share with the schools. And our education budget is increasing by 5.34%. So I know some people love looking at our budget in percentages and other people love looking at it in numbers. So the municipal budget is increasing by 1.3 million. The school budget is increasing by 2.9 million. And shared services is increasing by $201,000. But back to health insurance a little bit. As you know, the town joined the GIC in 2014. At that time, we were self-insured and appropriated around $11 million for health insurance. So fiscal year '23, all these years later, our health insurance budget is around 12 million. And so we are budgeting for about a 6% increase in health insurance. The GIC does not vote the increases until their April meeting, so we kind of have to guess. So 6% may be conservative, but we really don't know yet because they are out to bid for rates this year. Of the health insurance, about half is school employee health insurance, and of the remaining half, about 3 million of that is retirees and the rest falls to town employees. So this year, we are seeing an increase in our staffing on the town side. We're going from 210.77 people to 220.77 people. I always feel bad for the .77 person, but it's fine. I'm like, what's that? It's not me. All of the costs of the new employees have been accounted for, so we've accounted for them in OPEB, health insurance, workers' comp, Medicare. It's an all-in approach, just like we're doing with our Facilities Master Plan Two. Comes out to about $17,000 to $18,000 an employee. It really depends on the employee's salary, too, because that affects their Medicare costs. But typically, what we see is about $17,000 to $18,000 an employee.
So where's the breakdown? Are you going to show up with the 10 people that?
I will. I know you can barely wait.
I knew you'd have that.
Here we go. So our highlights and changes. So remember last year, we moved our, all of our postage to one budget, and we gave a flow of that, and we did all of our fuel. So it turns out that we've been sending bills to ourselves for telephones as well as advertising, which drives me crazy. So we are taking all of our phone lines and all of our advertising line items and putting them in one budget for efficiency purposes. We still have for the third year in a row, the Finance Committee Reserve funded at 1.5 million. We have salary reserves for all of our unsettled collective bargaining agreements, and we have three unsettled and four up next year. So this gray here is going to be gray by the time we get to the end of it, but it's going to be good. And in fiscal year '23, we are implementing the new step program for our unrepresented employees as well. We have COLIS at 1.5. We have a new part-time data collector position in the assessing department. So that person, basic job will be actually going and figuring out the values of people's homes. And so you know, and poor Bill was not able to be here today because he had some personal issues going on, and he's happy to come to any of your future meetings. And he has a big memo he wrote on this. But basically, there's a lot of state mandates that we need to adhere to when it comes to reporting to Department of Revenue. And he wants to make sure that we continue to do that. And a lot of that has to do with our cyclical inspections. So he did an analysis of whether it was more cost-effective for us to have a part-time, unbenefited person or to hire someone. And he determined it was much more beneficial for us to have a part-time data collector in-house. So he has brought forward a $19 part-time data collector position. For community development, last year, we lost our part-time housing specialist in the budget. If you remember correctly, we funded in CPC to do a study. That study, we signed a contract today, is ongoing. So what we want to do is bring that position back into the budget so that person can implement the findings of the study, which is going to be really important. For the senior center, we do anticipate a mid to late fiscal year '23 opening, which we're saying February, next February. So the budget does plan for the increases in utility costs for that building for the months that it will be open, as well as an increase in the van driver's hours. There's $20,000 for the festival committee to put towards different events that they may have, so that's exciting. And then there's public safety improvements. We're going to go through these. So we've got four firefighters, GMV bull chiefs here, and they're much more eloquent when it comes to speaking about public safety. So if we need them, they're ready. But we have four firefighters, four police officers, one 911 communication dispatcher. And this is part of a long-term staffing goal plan for both of the departments.
So this is outside of the tent on the other.
This is with the tent. This is within the tent. So I don't want to tell the chiefs this because I know they don't think so. But there's some overlapping themes between the police and the fire department. They're alike in many ways. Just don't tell them. So they both have some staffing issues that exist because our population has increased by 14% from 2000 to 2020. And also, we've had an increase in our seasonal and day population. So we know we have Brooks, we know we have Merrimack. But we also have increased businesses bringing more people to North Andover during the day that we didn't really see before. So in the year 2000, we had 27,202 people, and in 2022, we have 30,915 people. twenty-twenty-two, we have thirty thousand nine hundred and fifteen people. So we're going to talk about fire first. So a little history of the fire department. From nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-nine, there was forty-four firefighter personnel. In nineteen ninety-nine, an override passed to allow for eight new firefighters in the deputy chief position, which brought us to fifty-two firefighters and three administrative personnel. So we had one firefighter for every four, five hundred and twenty-four residents. In twenty-nineteen, we increased by one more administrative position, which is the EMS coordinator. So today, under the new, um, census data, we have five hundred and ninety-four residents per firefighter, which is a thirteen before, thirteen point four percent increase since nineteen ninety-nine. Their call volume has also increased. From two thousand nine to two thousand nineteen, they had a total increase in calls for service of twenty-two point four percent, and from two thousand nine to two thousand nineteen, they had thirteen point three percent increase EMS calls. A little bit about the fire department structure, and one of the things that we were talking about when we created these presentations was that a lot of people probably don't really know how the fire department works, right? Especially, we've got new finance committee members, and so it's good to kind of explain to people how it, how it operates. So we have four units, each working twenty-four hour shifts. We have forty firefighters and twelve lieutenants for suppression. Each shift has three lieutenants and ten firefighters. We have two stations. And for staffing, we have two engine companies with one lieutenant and two firefighters. One ladder truck with one lieutenant and one firefighter. And we run two BLS, just basic lift services, ambulances with two firefighters. So our ultimate goal is to add four new firefighters. This would be adding an additional firefighter on the ladder truck staffing. The result would be one lieutenant and two firefighters on the ladder truck. This would enhance safety both for the members and the public. Many of the duties of the ladder truck require three members to be safely executed, including the thirty-five-foot ladder raise, roof ventilation at fire scenes, natural gas and propane gas emergencies, and EMS calls because ladder one is actually a class-five ambulance. And I just want to remind you that we, two years ago, came before you, and we implemented the ladder lieutenants, right? And that was a, a great structure change that we had. And this was the next step, these four firefighters was the next step in that five-year plan. Um, Chief McCarthy actually had it last year, but with the point six percent increase, uh, we had to break his heart and say we couldn't do it. So, uh, we're here today with it. Um, and then the next step, um, for the fire department is to talk about captains, um, in a future, in a future year. So due to the increase of all apparatus being on simultaneous calls, the ladder truck has been responding to more incidents than ever. They actually had seventy-six calls in January of twenty-twenty-two alone. It's also the primary responsible piece of apparatus in many of those incidents. And with the development of the Amazon building, the redevelopment of Aussie properties, and other new developments coming to town, fully staffing the ladder truck will be essential to providing the service the town has come to expect. And then Chief Ware gave me pictures. So he wrote this part, I, I just have, I just put the picture in. So he, the three firefighter flat-shoulder carry. So due to the weight of a thirty-five-foot firefighter ladder, which weighs over a hundred and forty pounds, three firefighters ultimately carry this ground ladder on a fire scene. Extending the fly of a thirty-five-foot ladder, as taught by the Fire Academy, you're supposed to have three members required to safely and efficiently extend the ladder and place it into operation. And then finally, this was on January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, we had one firefighter operating alone on an aerial ladder. One member was tasked with venting a roof on an icy ladder with no backup because the other member was below operating the ladder controls, which is less than ideal. So that's the firefighters. Now we'll talk about our friends, the police officers. So prior to two thousand one, we had thirty-six police officers and one administrator. In two thousand one, using a federal COPS grant, the town hired three police officers, bringing the number of police officers to thirty-nine. Now, am I correct in saying that both of you came on under the, the increase in police officers and firefighters the last time we started increase? So the last time we had an increase in personnel was when our chiefs were hired, which is interesting. Um, so in two thousand one, we used the federal COPS grant, and we hired three police officers, bringing the number of police officers to thirty-nine. I will tell you, the last few years, we have applied for the COPS grants, we have applied for the SAFERs grant, which is how you get, um, additional firefighters through federal funds, and unfortunately have not gotten it. Uh, we have one police officer for every six hundred and ninety-seven residents. We have not seen a number of staff change since two thousand one, other than the addition of one civilian employee. We have seen some changes to rank. We currently have one police officer for every seven hundred and ninety-two residents, which is a thirteen point six percent increase from two thousand one to twenty-twenty-two. And in twenty-twenty-one, the police responded to seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty-one So for the police, we have one chief, two lieutenants, we have nine sergeants, twenty-nine patrol officers, we have twelve, well, anywhere from one to twelve reserve officers, and forty full-time sworn officers. This was kind of an interesting chart that we had created, and the size refers to the square miles of that community. Um, we were doing this for something else, and it just kind of stood out to me. So if you look at this, you know, when you look at other communities of our size, like Tewksbury, um, which has a very similar population to ours, they have sixty-two police officers, and we only have thirty-nine. Wakefield, which is smaller, has forty-two. Wilmington, which is smaller, has forty-six. Reading, which is smaller, has forty-six. In fact, the only community that have less were Drakeet, which is the same size as us, and with Reading, which is half the size of us. And these are the comps that we use for basically everything that we do, including our collective bargaining. And so when I did this, it really stood out to me. I thought, oh, how, how interesting that our numbers are so low. Talk a little bit about nine-one-one, and this kind of actually blew me away, um, this data, but we have nine nine-one-one communication dispatchers since nineteen ninety-seven. That's one for every three thousand four hundred and thirty-five residents. In twenty-twenty-one, our communication dispatchers fielded fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety-four nine-one-one calls. They logged twenty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-six calls into our computer-aided dispatch system. They answered an additional thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifteen calls in the business line. They transmitted or received one hundred and one thousand six hundred and fourteen radio transmissions. The average nine-one-one call was one minute and thirty-eight seconds. The calls are pretty evenly distributed by day of the week, and heaviest between ten AM and seven PM. And in the last two years, the town has begun to receive cellular calls, which has also increased the number and types of calls received. So if you remember correctly, before, if you called nine-one-one from your cell phone, it was actually picked up by Essex County. Now, if you call nine-one-one from your cell phone, it's picked up by North Andover, which makes your being serviced much better. It's not being transferred anymore. We run two dispatchers at a time currently. The ultimate goal would be to increase the police officer staffing by four patrol officers and the nine-one-one dispatch staff by one communications officer in order to better serve the town. The why is the changes to population and the changes to type of calls are requiring more and different types of attention. Our renewed emphasis on community policing means that our officers are spending more time at calls with multiple officers responding to back each other up. And over the past few years, our nine-one-one dispatch responsibilities have increased, including with our emergency medical dispatch requirements. Our long-term goal in the police department is also changes to the command structure. All right. I'm going to go into the enterprise funds, but I don't know if you guys want to talk to the police and fire first, since that was kind of a heavy, if you have any questions for them at all?
I'd just like to say that the particularly important, what you're emphasizing here, the scope of what fire does, fire and police, but particularly fire being sort of the front edge of this, and I can just say, I had a neighbor who had an experience with, couldn't get in the house because of some issues, and the fact that we responded, that the, the chief had staff there, and they took about an hour to sort it out, and this resident was just fiberglass. They're like, oh my God, I didn't, I didn't know who could help me. And the fact that it came quickly, they took care of it, it was local, I mean, that's the scope of services, so I can appreciate that, well, you've got that kind of dedication to that important task to that one person. Other things are happening in our community. And so I get, and the same thing, I'm sure, you know, for, for police too, which, so, um, I, I think it's very, uh, helpful to kind of lay it out like this, because I, I haven't seen anything of, of this depth before. Maybe you have, Dick or Rosemary, but, um, it's, it's really, I think, valuable for folks to understand the scope and to kind of, um, use that. The other thing is seventeen thousand calls, you, you kind of do the math on that, and it's like, okay, the number of calls, you know, that are coming in on an hourly basis, it, it just, wow. That's a lot. And it's, you know, and taking action too, so, really impressive.
But I, I think it's compounded, I agree with everything that you're saying, is when you look at the shape of North Andover, it's something like this, and what is it, twenty-six, twenty-seven square miles? That's a lot of space to cover for police and fire. That is, if you're getting a call up by the Middleton line, I know the police are in, in different quadrants, but when you take that and combine it with some of the communities that you were comparing it to, um, I mean, this has been a, a fear of ours for quite some time. It's a lot of land to cover. And so often, you know, the police, they're in, um, they're in their cruisers by themselves. I mean, it could be a long wait for backup. Um, and of course, the fire department, when they're bringing their heavy-duty trucks and somebody, in many cases, somebody's life is depending on it. As it is with the police, it's different, but, um, I think it really shows that it's, it's been a long time, and I'm very pleased that we're reviewing all of this and taking into consideration that, I think the things that people expect from their government, first and foremost, is safety and, um, and their trash picked up, and their snows, the snow removed. I mean, there's certain basic things that people expect in their tax dollars, but I, you know, what these two gentlemen run is, it's the very basics of life. So it's, 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 it is, it's a good analysis, um, of what they've been working with. And again, I think people, if they, they look at it that way, they will see the, the great need for an increase in staff. It's been a long time, um, that we've done it. And I will tell you, when it was done back then, it was controversial. Um, it's even more controversial now that the fact that we haven't done it already is what I would suggest, so.
What is incredibly helpful for me is seeing on paper what they are already doing, or what they were doing and what they are doing, and, um, being able, I think it's important for all the residents to see exactly what they handle each and every day and why this is not an unreasonable request by any means. The fact that there would ever be one firefighter on a ladder truck just is not acceptable, so we have to value their safety and, and, you know, I mean, we want to optimize how well they can serve all of us, so, you know, teamwork and, uh, we definitely want them at their optimal capacity and appreciate everything they do.
I'll just, I'll add to that too. I think it's been since two thousand one since we've had any increase in staffing, and a lot has changed. If you think about twenty years, a lot has, has changed, the population's increased, um, you know, the requirements for both police and firefighters and what they need to do. Um, you know, you've got some great examples in here of police, how they have to stay at scenes longer now because they've, they've got much more complicated things to deal with. So, not that things weren't complicated twenty years ago, but it just seems like today, you know, we've got a lot of issues and going on and stuff. So I think it's, 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 the time is right to do this and to increase that staffing and to ensure, you know, both the safety of our, of our first responders and the public. You know, again, the ladder truck and having proper backup for police officers when they need it, and, um, you know, great example of, of teamwork that happened yesterday, you know, getting all of those guns and drugs and everything off the street. Uh, that was amazing. Congratulations, Chuck, on that. I mean, great bunch of young guys that are out there doing the job, and, you know, a lot of those guys just, I'm, just not too long out of the academy and, um, you know, so, and there they were to back each other up, three of them on a Sunday morning, so, um, but, you know, at, with that point, you know, some of the other towns left vulnerable because they're all in there, well, well, Sunday morning's not that busy, but usually, right? But, um, I mean, you know, that's a, a prime example of, you know, you need other officers out there to make sure that other places are covered. So, um, yeah, I think the time is right, and it's certainly, um, you know, it's a good thing to increase the staffing, so all for it.
I wanted to say thank you for the comparison. Do you have a chance? Because I was going to ask. And I think that that's staggering to see, especially on a square-mile basis, that what you guys are covering on a day-to-day basis is impressive. Um, my, my, I don't know if you even have the statistic, but do you have a percentage of calls that are going to, like Merrimack and, like Royal Crest, or?
I have, I do have, I do have data on Merrimack.
Yeah. Because, well, and while you're looking for that, my point is, all those other comparable towns don't have a college campus that they have on their, that you guys are, you know, contending with and.
But adding to that, I, I would guess, I don't know this to be a fact, but I think it's a pretty good and educated guess, we also have a, a high senior population and a lot of senior care facilities. So again, a lot of your calls, I am sure, are, are for our seniors who are in trouble or need, need, um, a quick ride to the, to the hospital. So it's, it's, it's so many things that make us a little bit different than even some of those comparison communities.
I think another interesting thing is that we have focused, um, a lot on the community policing piece of it over the last few years and getting our officers out in the community. And I suspect that people then feel more comfortable calling them for things that they, in the past, may not have thought to call, to ask for help with, and, you know, we need to sort of evolve with, with that.
Just having officers in the family and the schools, right?
Yes, that alone.
That alone, like my kids know.
It's really about Gibbs.
This is, I don't know if they know who Officer Perry, no, they do. Um, but just the fact that he's out there and they don't hesitate to ask him a question, right?
Yes.
Or to like go up to him, or that, that connection in the community is, is so valuable. Um, so you.
Well, you're, you're looking at it, I, I know I've said this before. The night of the Columbia gas fires, our police and fire were going into gas-filled, fire-filled buildings, um, to take out, you know, to, to, to take down the fire, but also our police was going in, because the fire department was busy with the fires, going in and taking the elderly and the handicapped out of their homes when it would be gas-filled. And I'll tell you, um, they were all so brave, so very, very brave. So I think, you know, they've earned our respect, but they, they also have earned our responsibility to make sure that they go to home to their families too, so.
So these are just the police calls, um, not the fire. So I'm sure if we added the fire, it would be higher, but, so over the last ten years, um, the police have responded to the college. So we, we pulled everything with a three hundred and fifteen Turin Pike Street address. Um, and so we went there one thousand six hundred and seventy-three times over the ten-year period, an average of a hundred and sixty-seven calls a year for the PD. Um, and I could certainly call it, pull it for the fire as well. I don't have it on hand for the fire, but.
My goodness, that's almost half the number of days in a year that they're.
It's just an important point, that, like, that we're lagging behind in staffing, um, as far as square miles and, um, population, and we also have that college. It's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing to have Merrimack College here. Like, I'm not trying to say that, um, but we need to properly staff so that you guys can do your job properly. Um, my only other question is, we're going to add all the police officers, what about cruisers?
It's a great question. So we have three in the budget this year. We have three every year in the budget.
But that's not an increase, right? Because we, um.
So we may consider not turning some of them in.
Sir plus, thank you.
Chief Grady, you want to come to the microphone and tell us your plan for the cruisers?
Um, sure.
Are they just going to patrol? They're walking, are they walking a bike?
Right, right now, our, our fleet is in really good shape. We transitioned to the SUVs. Um, so the first year this would happen, we'd obviously take a look at the cruisers, the wear and tear, the mileage, and then speak to the town manager about a plan moving forward. Um, ideally, you know, at least two officers share a cruiser, it's their office. So if we have to bump it up to three, it's going to take a toll on the cruiser, wear and tear and stuff, but, um, it, I think it's too early to tell right now, so we're just going to have to see how it, you know, pans out.
So will you be adding a police officer to the shift, to each shift, or, I, I don't know, this could be too detailed.
The, the plan is to increase the shift. Uh, each, each shift, um, just an extra body.
Yep.
And, and much like the fire department, adding an extra body to help out and, and do the job and back each other up and everything. So right now would be at least, um, a, a body per shift, and then obviously, we have the community police officer program we're going to be starting, so we'd like to roll that out too, and that could be one of the bodies.
So when you say they share a, a cruiser, it's every shift, right, that they?
Yeah, so if a shift changed, an officer will come in and either park his car and it stays there for eight hours, or they'll give it to the next officer, and they'll jump in it, and so it's running sixteen hours, you know, and, and. or they'll give it to the next officer and they'll jump in it and so it's running 16 hours, you know, in, in those conditions.
Okay, thank you so much.
And they both prepared their own PowerPoints in case there was additional questions. So, you know, if we really wanna zing them, we could make some public give up, but I guess. Yes. Do we have anything else for the chief? Or do we move on to the enterprise funds? We can always come back. Okay. So next we have the sewer enterprise fund budget. So the operating budget for the sewer enterprise fund is actually decreasing by 2.3%. And that's because we have debt falling off in both the sewer and the water. And we don't have any large projects currently forecasted for either department right now. The sewer rates are forecasted to remain the same this year for the 11th consecutive year. But we will warn that we may see a rate increase in a future close year because that GLSD assessment does continue to increase by about 5% each year. The only increases that we're really seeing in this budget are largely due to supply and demand issues for materials. And so there really wasn't any changes other than that debt going down. The retained earnings in the sewer enterprise fund budget are at $5.9 million. For the water enterprise fund budget, that's also decreasing and that's going down by 3.7%. Again, the water rates are forecasted to remain the same as well. We are introducing a business manager in that budget. And so that person will be responsible for all the water and sewer billing. It's a good position to have. We actually are piloting it right now at DPW to see how it works out, particularly in the water and sewer side. But it's, it's a great thing to have, especially when you are a community that has their own water source. They are somebody that can find leaks early on, do early on leak detection. It's our own eyes on the bills so that we can find any issues that might exist. You know, even just working on the scheduling and the overtime, it's usually very helpful. I've never worked with DPW, didn't have its own business manager before. So this is unusual generally, but we think it's gonna be a, a big improvement to the, the water and sewer department, so. And their retained earnings are $5.3 million, almost 5.4. So this is just a little breakdown of the fiscal year '23 enterprise fund expenditures. So you can see the GLSD assessment really does take up about 26% of the total budgets. Not shockingly, the rest of it really, 14% of salaries and 13% is indirect costs, which are employee costs, so. Okay, I just wanna talk a little bit about the reserves. So for our stabilization account, currently we have a $5.3 million balance. We're making an appropriation of $221,000 to adhere to our finance reserve rules. For our capital stabilization account, our current balance is $1.3 million. We are recommending transferring $500,000 in there. We are using that as a savings account for Facilities Master Plan 2. We think increasing that account for future design of some of those projects is really wise. We have the free cash currently and it's a great place to save it. The OPEB trust balance is $6 million right now. We're recommending a fiscal year '23 appropriation of $141,000. That takes into account not only our new employees, but also the new employees on the school side. The special ed stabilization balance is at $764,503. We're working on phasing that out entirely. I prefer that if we're going to have any overruns in any of our operating budgets, that we go to the finance committee reserve account and that we don't be using stabilization accounts to pay for anything in the operating, because all we're doing is creating issues in the next year. And our free cash certified is, was on July 1st, $12.8 million. So I just wanna talk a little bit about the funding of capital. I know we already voted, but because we're doing it in an unusual way and we are using money from the budget, I just wanted to go over that one more time. So for free cash for our capital, we're using 6.7 million total for funding all of our reserves and our capital. From debt, we're borrowing. So if you remember correctly, we were kind of holding all of this debt in arrears in our debt budget. We weren't using it. We were letting it kind of float over to free cash the next year. This year, we actually ended up borrowing it mid-year to pay for the overage in the senior center. So next year, we said, you know what? Let's just use it now for what are the capital needs that we have, in particularly for the design of the middle school and the Kittredge. So Paul Lynn has already started the fiscal year '24 budget and placed it back in so we wouldn't forget. So we're using a million dollars from that debt to pay for those. We have an appropriation from the tax levy using that new growth of $1.8 million. So we have a total funding of the capital at 9.6. And again, this is different than usual because we're, we usually only fund projects less than $50,000 using levy capacity. And we're funding projects worth $2.9 million using levy capacity. But remember, the reason we're doing that is because, and we talked about this a lot at the forecasting meeting, we have some new growth that's coming on that the TIP's going to start. So 80% of that new growth, like we talked about the balloon and then the balloon air comes out, it's gonna go into the rest of the area, right? So we need to make a decision next year, do we wanna raise that again and have it impact everybody? Or do we not wanna raise it again? Or do we wanna consider something like the residential exemption to, to have that burden not be as large? Do we wanna raise it slowly? Do we wanna do $300,000 a year? There are a lot of different options that we have, but if we didn't raise it this year, we would never be able to get it back, right? We can't say in fiscal year '28, hey, remember we had that $1.8 million? We should get that. We can't do that. So we, we don't raise it now, we never get it. So that, but doing this as a one-time expenditure allows us next year to be really strategic about how we wanna affect the tax base. So we're trying to be really smart about how we spend this new growth money.
Was there any risks at all?
No. No, I can't think of any. And then after our free cash appropriations at town meeting, we will still have $5.2 million left in free cash. And again, that will get recertified on June 30th. And any additional money that's come in above our estimates and money that's not spent by June 30th in our budget will get added to that and we'll get new free cash. And that's the budget.
May I ask a question? Of course. On the OPEB, are we seeing that, that, that we're keeping pace with what we should be on that?
I mean, I don't know that anyone is keeping pace as where they should be except for Wellesley, only because they bonded the whole thing. So my recommendation on our OPEB liability as of June 30th, 2021, is $144 million. My recommendation on OPEB would be that in fiscal year '40, is that when we're done paying our pension? In fiscal year '40, when we're done paying our pension off. So you remember back in 2000, was that 2002, 2003? The state required us to start paying the pension liability that we had and they required us to pay a certain amount. And what the endeavor never extended, a lot of communities made the decision to have lower payments and extend. We didn't do that. And so we have a large amount of money that we're gonna have capacity grow in 2040. So I'd recommend taking that in 2040 and starting, flipping it over to OPEB. And so you have a plan then on how you're gonna pay it off. One of the things about OPEB is that OPEB is a worst-case scenario, right? OPEB is like, we all decide on the exact same day that we're gonna retire. The whole town, we're all out, right? And that's not gonna happen, right? So it's, it's the worst-case scenario. And so the fact that we have the trust fund and that we have $6 million in it is a huge first step. We're a much better place than many other communities are. And it's why we have the great bond rating. It's why our, our rating agencies look at us so favorably. But that 2040 plan is how I advise us to look at it. But the fact that we're putting something in every year and that we're planning for the new employees that we're getting goes a, a long way.
And I think the other thing that I can remember is the number we're driving towards is one year of projected expenses of retirement, so.
Not the whole, not the whole thing.
Because, I mean, that's sort of, it's sort of like your homeowner's insurance, right? If you knew you were gonna own the house for 30 years, would you really upfront pay the entire homeowner's insurance for 30 years? Or do you have one year in escrow? You have one year in escrow, right? You have always one year in advance. So it's conceptually the same thing, which is actually pretty prudent cushion there. So what it's saying is if we collected no money, the, what we're driving towards, if we collected no money to cover our OPEB expenses, we'd have one year in the bank, ready to go. So that's what, that's what we're driving towards in that. We've made progress. I mean, we, we start off at three, four, five, six. Yeah, yeah.
Remember the first time, like $75,000 or something?
I tried to do $25,000 and then got kicked out, you know, we voted on it.
Yeah, and then we're.
Town meeting, they refused, and I was like.
Yeah, yeah, and we're not digging a hole either. So every new hire is being integrated in. All, all the way in there, because again, they're not actually subject, or we're not subject as a community until they've been vested for 10 years. So we're already kind of banking in that in advance for each new position. So, awesome. Well done.
We're in better shape than anyway.
You explained it using someone's own homeowner's insurance. Of course, you're not gonna pay 30 years upfront and there is an escrow. So I think that's, that was a good example.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you to Lynn and Dee and our whole budget team. Yeah, I mean, the department has put a lot of work in this year, so we appreciated it.
I just have a couple of questions.
Of course, absolutely.
Could you go over any, or give examples of what the festival committee, the $20,000?
I could. So my thought is, one of the things that we're always working on is finding money for the fireworks. So my first thought is the fireworks. But then I think that, you know, there's often expenses and things that we wanna do for the tree lighting and, and I haven't actually attended a sheep sharing because we haven't had to have it, gotten to have it since I started. But there's always things that they always wanna do to kind of enhance the events and then we're always trying scrambling and going to the business owners and asking them for funding. And the last few years, in my opinion, have been really difficult on our business community. So if, if we can try to invest in, in having community events without having to go to them, I think it would be positive. One of the things that I've heard from residents is even in the office survey that we're bringing to you soon is that people miss that sense of community. And so my, my hope is that they'll use this money to kind of invest back in that. But my first thought and the conversation that I've had with Jeff Coco, the chair, is the fireworks.
But I think, I, I think this is a good example. And of course, we're not the same community as our community to the south. But they, I don't know if anybody had a chance to go down to Main Street in, in Andover. It was lit up, every building, every light. It was stunningly beautiful. The lights, the lights actually, I, I asked, how much did you pay for all the lights? And it was $15,000, but this is, this is the difference. They have the staff in DPW to put them all up and take them all down without going into overtime. We have such limited staff that can do it, and I know this personally, and that it's, and, and the other problem is if you can't get the lights off the trees, the squirrels eat them. So every year, we're looking to spend, you know, $700 to $1,000 just replacing existing lights, which is extremely frustrating. And as I said, there's, we have really one staff member that knows how to work and operate the bucket truck. So if he gets sick or if he's on vacation or the bucket truck is down. And this is along with all the other stuff they do. So, and there's a lot of fundraising, as you said, that goes on, that we, that people go around and, like, for example, like the wreath and the banner money was donated and, but it's complicated. It's a lot of bookkeeping. But there was no way that that could be done any other way. It just isn't, isn't and wasn't in the budget. And most people do really enjoy it. So it's, I think it's a, a small drop in the bucket for quality of life issues and things that people enjoy. And more than half of that would go to fireworks. We've already do have some citizens who've donated some money towards fireworks. You know, they, they round up what they pay for wreaths and things, which is so wonderful of them. And some even pay even more than that. It's still, it won't even come close. And I often take the holiday decorating money and try to share it with the festival committee because again, it's decorating, so it all seems to work out. But it's, it's very challenging, so. I, I, I'm sure Jeff Coco and others will thank you for, and that's also for the parades, for, for the bands. I mean, it's really, you know, it's, it's, it's very good, but it's still, it will be a very tight budget. It's the community events that they have at the, at the common, when they're trying to have a band or, you know, something fun for the children or whatever. It's always fundraising and it's constant and it's difficult, you know.
There's also a festival grant right now that Sarah's working on, which is, I think, in its first year. So that's exciting. We're gonna get an application, too.
Yeah, I think, like you said, everybody's missing that community piece like that, coming back together. And so that's what, why people move here. That's why people live here, right?
Exactly.
Just to be part of those, of that, not the only reason, but part of it, right? Because we are a community and we do celebrate together. And so, yeah, I was just curious what.
And it's also, and it's also, you know, it, for a lot of families who are struggling, you know, Fourth of July is a staycation. It's important. It's things that they remember. It's, it brings joy to families who sometimes they just can't get away. They don't have the resources. So again, it's, I think you said it well. It's a, it's, it's something where we all share. And I think especially now coming out of COVID, thank God, hopefully, that it's time, is, is, I'd like to say, it's time to celebrate. So I know Jeff will be very appreciative of that money. I'm very appreciative of that money because we're always scrambling. He'll call me up and I'll, all right, let me see what I can do. So it's, but a lot of our good citizens have made donations to the different things, but it's still, it's, none of it's cheap. And so thank you.
I have to go on a completely different topic.
Okay.
The sewer enterprise and the capital, right? In the greater Lawrence sanitary district.
Yep.
I think we've talked about on many occasions the over, overflows that we talk about or we get the notices for that go into the Merrimack River. Is there a long-term plan as far as, like, do we have to, is that something we have to plan for? That we have to be giving them money, preparing to give them money so that we can fix that issue?
So I believe that they have, there has been some state money that's been appropriated to deal with that issue under their APRA funding. Jim could speak much more eloquently or Tim, since he's now our appointee to it. But when we talked about, when we talked about APRA funding internally, it's not something that we've highlighted as one of our needs because the state has come forward with money for that, which has been huge. So I don't think that will fall on the repairs.
And to piggyback off that, this is exclusive of the APRA funding, right? Like this.
No APRA funding is included in this budget, right?
And we'll be talking about that.
That'll be completely separate.
Next meeting, maybe, I think, right?
Next meeting, we'll come before you talk. At least beginning conversations, reporting back on the survey.
And the only other thing I wanted to highlight is what you've done for the schools. We have increased our per pupil spending significantly over the past few years. And that's just through your planning and your cooperation and your work with the school department. We're funding their one- and two-year plans of their seven-year plan within the levy, within the budget, adding services that are so important to the kids and to our school department. And it's, when you look at our comparable towns, like we do with the police and fire and then the schools, and then we see what our per pupil spending is comparatively to other towns, you've really done an amazing job of increasing that. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was kind of stated and that goes on top with Facilities Master Plan 2 and what that's gonna do for the schools. So I think that's a huge thing to highlight, what we've been able to do with, within the budget.
Yeah, it's been a great team effort. We've been really lucky. Everyone's working and moving in the same direction, which is so nice. And it's amazing what people can get done when they collaborate and are willing to all work together and figure out, you know, what sacrifice that team made and how we can make things happen. And so it's, it's been, it's been very fruitful to have these relationships work the way they have been, so.
And it's great. We have three boards, I think, for the first time in a long time, like really advocating for the schools, right? And kind of trying to move in that direction and working towards similar goals. So I think that's fabulous. Stan, would you like? Did you? Yes.
She's good. I, I wanted to see if she'd actually do that. Stanley, 43 Stone Creek Road. I only have one question. Is there any potential impact on our bond rating, if anything, that's in this budget? Like, I know that it must be a, a, a real asset for our bond rating to have a lot of free cash. So the fact that our free cash is going down fairly noticeably between this year and that next year, is there any possibility that will have an impact on, on the bond rating?
So free cash is considered to be a reserve, but this is the same mechanism we used the last two years. So last year, we did the, basically almost exactly the same funding mechanism, took it down by half and it was replenished. I anticipate that replenished and more. I anticipate that our free cash will be replenished again this year. I don't know that it will be replenished to the $12 million mark. I don't think so either, but I think we will continue to have a healthy. But I think we will continue to have a healthy free cash. And remember that a lot of the free cash that we are doing, we are moving to other stabilization accounts. And really, that's what they want to see. They want to see that we're holding it in a place where we're going to be using it for our future. So I think they'll be very happy.
Thank you.
That was a good question though, Stan.
Thank you, Stan. Appreciate it. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
To you and all the department heads, Lori, Dee. You guys put together a fabulous presentation and make it so easy for us to follow along and see what's happening. So, thank you.
Yeah, but I think you do a few things with the numbers.
Just a few things. You just do a couple of things.
Just a couple of things on the numbers.
Just done.
Hundred days of town meeting.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you to the.
Oh dear God.
It's funny because I was working on a presentation a lot this weekend and when my older daughter left this morning, she goes, bye, mom, have fun. I was like, will be. Even they know.
All right, so we'll move on to, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. We're going to move on to a couple of appointments from our subcommittee. I think there's a committee that's really excited to have some appointments. So I'll turn that over to Janice and Dick, if you guys want to talk about that.
I was just going to say, so just amazing that we had two people who were really, really interested and really into poetry and write their own poetry and really stepped forward to become on that, to be part, come part of the poet laureate committee, which of course is right now currently, I believe, understaffed and we need
Yes.
to get a few folks on there. So both of these people come very highly recommended and both of them, you know, in speaking with them, they have a great love for poetry and I believe Taylor writes poetry every day. So it was a great match. And Charlotte is a new resident in town and she's very involved in some of the boards in her former town and really is looking to try to get involved in North Andover and has some great ideas for cultural events and cultural happenings. So three, I think, really good appointments for these boards. And we want to thank them for stepping up.
And remind everybody that there's always room for more. Please feel free to let us know you're interested.
Can we take them all together or? Yeah, okay. Then I would entertain a motion to appoint these three members to their respective boards.
I will move that we appoint.
Yeah, make sure the terms are.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, maybe we should state the terms in the motion.
So I move that this like board appoint Charlotte Lyons to the cultural council for a term ending June 30th, 2023, and Taylor Mace to the poet laureate committee for a term ending June 30th, 2024, and also Krista Lamb to the poet laureate committee for a term ending also June 30th, 2024. Thank you.
Can I have a motion in a second? All those in favor? Well, thank you very much.
Can I just touch upon the one thing that the town manager said? The way the poet laureate committee is set up with seven members, it makes it really quite difficult to get that quorum. So if you have seven members, you need four. If you have six members who can make it, you still need four. And then if you have five members, it would be three, yeah. So it does, you brought up a good point that maybe.
Maybe one, take it down one.
Maybe take it down one so that there's a little bit more ability to fill it and meet your quorum.
You also could decide to make some associate members that were non-voting.
I thought of that.
They could come and still be part of the process, but they don't count a quorum. That way they could have, I mean, that may be something that makes sense. We certainly could put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
So welcome to all of those members, new members. The town doesn't run without the volunteers and everybody that is willing to volunteer their time to the various committees. We don't have any consent items, no governmental reports. We just have the approval of our January 24th, 2020 open session minutes. Does anybody have any comments or corrections or?
I'm sure I'm with approval of the open session minutes for our January 24th, 2022. As written.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? So those are accepted. Town manager, do we have any reports?
Two great things. So we, our small business testing program was actually a huge success. We had 92 small businesses sign up and we gave out 306 tests. So that was really good. We had people coming in. They were really excited. So we were really happy about that. And then Dee has some huge news, which I will let Dee share.
Okay, no door.
She's like, I do. It's not about a door. And door is also exciting. Dee, tell us your big news. You forgot.
I have been appointed to the Mass Municipal Association's executive board.
Very exciting. Yep, we're very proud of her.
Absolutely.
I will again clarify for my son that it's not mixed martial arts. That's also the MMA.
She will be cage fighting anytime soon.
But it's the municipal equivalent. So, good deal.
You get to sit up at the big table during the dinners and everything? Wow. That one next year.
Oh, we knew you went.
She'll be looking down at us all. Yep.
That's great.
We're very proud. That's great.
That's good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The testing, the tests you also shared with the seniors, correct? I don't know if we mentioned that.
We did wheels. We did the veterans lunches. We did, I'm trying to think. We had so many that we gave out. It's been really well received. We're actually picking up some more tomorrow, some of which we're going to be helping, saving for the teachers at February school vacation if they need them. We may throw out another small business one to see if there's some people that we missed because we actually expected more. We had more businesses to get the small business grants than this, so. Okay, so we'll work on. Yeah, there may be more. We can, we talked about opening it back up because we had allotted 600. So, you know, I think that's a great, it's a great hit if we can keep businesses open by, you know, making sure they have the tests available. So, but all in all, I think, you know, we were, we were happy to be able to do that.
I want to appreciate, give our appreciation to you about how you guys did it strategically and like shared it, you know, to specific groups and got those that really needed them instead of kind of doing a blanket, you know, who can get here fastest type of thing.
Yeah, the housing authority was thrilled. Lori got them over to the housing authority. You know, the community development office of the businesses that were coming in were so excited to getting them. So it was really all hands on deck, making sure everybody got, got them out to where they needed to be, which was, I think, really positive and we got a good reception about it. So we all felt good about it because they really made a difference, which is good.
Thank you.
How are the numbers?
Numbers are down significantly. We're seeing about 10 a day, so maybe even lower. I want to say we might have been closer to 25 total today. But we're, yeah, the numbers are dramatically down, so we're all very happy.
The schools are way down?
Schools are very much down, yeah. And those, that testing started also, they're sending home those.
Yep.
Yep, they start testing those.
Yeah, our kids came home.
So now things are starting to look much brighter, so. A little bit more. Yeah. I'm hoping we'll be able to get these off soon too, so we're getting there.
Yes, definitely.
I think we should have a town-wide mask burning.
Bonfire.
Any of those leftover Christmas trees?
They're still out there. Come and see those trees. Come and pour them. Bring them in.
Are there any select word that we?
Other than to say, Happy Valentine's Day, don't forget to, don't forget to remember your loved ones. Our loved ones, kids and everything, so Happy Valentine's Day. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
We're a couple of days apart. Not years, of course, but a couple of days apart on our birthdays.
I'd like to just, just say thank you to our town manager, Melissa, for helping a neighbor who had, you know, a situation that's sort of kind of a little tricky. And, you know, we talked about the budget tonight, all these grand big things. And, you know, this is a big aircraft carrier, but that personal attention, really impressive and I appreciate it. And again, it's something that I hope folks in this community recognize that we are really blessed by the leadership that you have. And you set an example and I think that's really echoes through the whole town hall. And you can see it in all the department heads and the collaboration, the willingness to like, yep, this is a problem. We're here to take those on and figure out how to work our way through it and make it as good as we can. So that's a really neat thing. And I hope folks are as proud of this community as I am because these are the sort of things, as well as all this wonderful money and all these sources. It's that piece that we live day to day, so thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that we did swear in a new firefighter, Sam Bird. Usually it's part of the meeting, but due to COVID and we wanted to spread out a little bit. So we did it earlier in the evening downstairs, so just wanted to wish him congratulations and welcome to the fire department. Other than that, I guess we will, our next meeting is February 28th. 28th, there it is. Our next meeting is, yeah, that's 28th at 7:00 PM. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.